Real power members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
All right, thank you, ma'am. With that, next item is item number four, approve the agenda. Do we have anything to amend?
I do have two items to add. Item fifteen B, a RIPA resolution, and item fifteen C, ARPA projects.
Okay. Need the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Do we have a motion?
I don't know, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Tipton made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Ms. Hood, second. Any discussion? All three of us said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item, approve the minutes from April the fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Hope you had a chance to look at it. If so, we need the motion to approve the minutes. That's presented to you. Do we have a motion?
Not my question.
All right. Mr. Herron made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All three of us said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
I'm staying.
Mr. Jeter, staying. Next item is the Assistant's expression period. And we have quite a bit on the agenda. So if you're not on the agenda, I encourage you to come here on the agenda. It's hope till we can get to you. So the Assistant's expression period, let me read this quick statement. This period is upon the meeting, and anyone who wishes to address the board staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, in the county, and or whatever the safety represent. The board mayor may not respond, do anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, have them in arms.
They have not.
We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered actively closed as an expression. With that, six persons now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just got to take another minute to go over the, I'm Sheriff Jeffy. I'm Scott County Sheriff's Office. We'll take a few minutes here for this. If there are quarterly stats, I thought we all might want to hear something about. And from January first through March thirty-first, Scott County Dispatch received a total of fifteen thousand, six hundred and six calls. Of those calls received, we were dispatched to the sheriff's office. We had a total calls of protective orders for this three-month period of forty-two. Criminal papers served this period were one thousand and forty-six with seven hundred and thirteen felonies, three hundred and nineteen misdemeanors, sixty-nine drug charges, and eight driving and influence-related charges. Officers issued two hundred and fifty-seven traffic summonses and was dispatched to eighty-five motor vehicles. Civil process for this period, we served thirteen hundred and two civil papers. There was four hundred and fifty-two IBRs, incident-based reports, with one hundred and eighteen closed arrests. The sheriff's office provided three hundred and fifty-nine hours of courtroom security. Also conducted eleven traffic points. Did one hundred and sixteen out-of-state expeditions involving two hundred and sixty-two hours, eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-two miles of travel for out-of-state expeditions. Sheriff's Office provided fifteen in-state transports. Also, we processed two hundred and sixty-two concealed weapons permit, forty-nine fingerprint applications, and also deputies unlocked forty-five vehicles. And that's all I have. You have any questions, Oden?
Any comments or questions? Well, Sheriff. Been busy, looks like.
It's been busy. But that's all we do.
We appreciate all that you did, Sheriff Bates.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am. How you doing?
I'm doing good. Peggy Tychus from Snowflake Road. I'm gonna cry today. I feel like y'all are family, though.
We all are.
I'm a little, I'm more nervous today, but I've got, I'm representing Snowflake Road, and I've got two people with me, but we would have more, but they's working people, and they can't make it to eight-thirty in the morning. And I called, back the only thing I've got to report, I called Terry Kilgore's office a couple of times, and I haven't heard back from him. And what I was going, well, what I would leave the message was, I would ask them if they, if Terry was working on getting us some funding for the, for the secondary roads, maybe moving them, moving some money from primary roads to the secondary roads. And, but I haven't heard back from her, or him. And the dirt roads, their dirt roads are either dusty, muddy, rough, and bushes. And I haven't called VDOT this month. But I'll probably start getting a whole of them again on account of where the bushes are growed out, and you can't see around them horseshoe curves. And we would love to get some more gravel, so we'll try to get that done till we can get, but the main focus is we'll make sure we get on that six-year plan.
We do have a public hearing, a joint public hearing with VDOT after we get through all of this, so if you want, stick around for it.
Okay.
With VDOT, it'll be. So you can go and speak again if you need to, so hang around till we do that, if you want.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Morning.
I'm back. I'm Larry Dickerson. I'm here representing the senior citizens in Nicholsville Park. We had a meeting last night, and they authorized me to come down here and talk about the farmer's market. I want to go back and, a number of you folks went here back ten, twelve years ago, maybe two, and review a little bit about the park history. The park was built by volunteers. Joe Meath had a vision, and that thing was built and completed by volunteers. It's been run for the last twenty-two years by volunteers, with the help of the county and taxpayer money that's funded somewhat to help out. But it's been run very well. We had great communications between the county and the board here, particularly since I've been down here and dealing with you folks. Unfortunately, that communication has got strained here in the last few days because of lack of communications. I, I, I hope in coming here that we can resolve some of that, because I was, we weren't invited to the meetings of, is it the COVID board, or I'm not certain what that board name is. We invited the people to come to meetings for the last two, and nobody showed up. And that's just, that's not acceptable, folks. Not acceptable at all. But be that as it may, the one thing, a goal I have come in here is, is try to get this thing back under control from a communication point. Back in two thousand twelve, the park and the county sat, signed a memorandum agreement of how the county and the park would operate. I wrote the original draft, and Sally took it and corrected my mistakes and added illegal leads to it. But anyway, just in quick summary, that draft says that the seniors will run the park as volunteers until such time that we don't have enough people to run the park. It also says that the county will fund any major repairs, and that they will provide two employees, one to clean the building and one to work the outside and do the maintenance. And the seniors agreed that they would do routine maintenance as they could, and we had to depend on Bill to do some items for us, because we either don't have the tools or the skills to do that. That's evolved over time, and the county originally paid the electricity bill because Nicholsville was giving us water. Then, and Nicholsville quit giving us water, and the county picked that up, and the PSA, and it goes on and on. But there's been some things evolved that changed a little bit, just because of circumstances. Back in two thousand, they probably had twenty-five volunteers, and the people actually cleaned the building free. We didn't hire anybody to do that. But as it evolved, and we lost people, things had, had to change a little bit. But be that as it may, that, that agreement is signed and should be on file here, and how we operate, I won't go into the details of that. I do want to go into the details about the senior citizens voted last night and a month ago about where they wanted to relocate the farmer's market. And that information was passed on through Jeff Kegley. Is it, can somebody give me the name of that board?
ARPA.
What is it?
ARPA.
Harper Board?
A-R-P-A.
Harper Board, okay. That information was passed on through Jeff Kegley, that were the seniors that voted to have that building put. Again, last night, we reconfirmed that, and it was unanimous both a month ago and last evening. I'll tell you how we got to the conclusion of this. There was four, there was three initial sites to start, well, there's two initial sites to start with. Look up at the concession stand between the flagpole and the concession stand, and then down below the road. That evolved, then.
All right. Bill, can you bring it up on Google Earth?
Yeah, I asked him to do it. Thank you, Bill.
All right, everybody can see exactly. I know, but somebody.
You're right. I asked Bill to do it, and I forgot to tell him to do it. That's the stress of Danny, looking at Danny in the face all the time. Okay. You don't have it yet. Okay, there we go, see it better. If you look out, I'm a little confused myself right where we're at here. Okay, if you look out the baseball field, you'll see the concession stand there. Bill, can you put the arrow on that?
Concession stand.
Yeah, right there.
Yep.
The original site was there between the flagpole, where the circle is, and the building. And that, it was a problem, because it'd be a water problem and an appearance problem together. It wasn't, it wasn't suitable. Now, if you go back out front, we go to the first one, and that is just down from the parking lot there in that area. And at first, everybody was, you hear farmer's market, people get excited, because they think, wow, we're gonna be able to sell farmer stuff, farmers do that. And everybody, you know, you kind of, you get the old sheepherd mentality. One goes in the gate, you all go through the gate. And I, I thought it was, at first glance, it was okay, too. I wasn't totally excited about it, and I was okay with it. But then that evolved, and we got to looking at the cost. And the cost to do the filling there, I've heard any quarter from ten to twenty thousand dollars, and I think about the last, best estimate I had, fifteen thousand?
Ten to fifteen.
Yeah. So it's gonna cost that to do the dirt fill, because you gotta pack the dirt, and you just can't go in and duck regular on the dirt in there. Lot to do. With that, another site we looked at, and Bill, if you'll come out to the playground, thought about building it right there. Well, a lot of people said kids use that, and when you start looking, that, that is probably one of the most active places we have in the park for kids. Plus, it's got a sewer line and a water line there. So, and, and it's got an elevation problem. You can't dig down because of the sewer line, and you'd have a problem with handicap people trying to get up to the, to the facility. And you've got one inch of rise, you got a foot of run, you got half for handicap. So that, that left us with basically two of them discounted, and, and a third one right there looking at the, below the road again. And I went out to the concession stand and having to thank Greg Quarter on the field there next to the concession stand. And so I called Greg and asked him if he'd be able to donate that to the county, if he would like to do that. He said he would absolutely love to help the county any way he could help out. All he wanted was a sign put up that the land would be donated in memory of his mother and daddy. That's pretty cheap land. That's all he wanted. Jeff Kegley and I went out there and took a transit and shot that. There's about an eighteen-inch roll-off for about twenty feet across about forty feet. So site preparation is minimal. It's hardly nothing. It butts right up to that parking lot area there, and it will fit in there in terms of adapting into the park, and will fit, fit really good. So that, we're down to two. And I could tell you that the park board voted for the one at the concession stand. Now, here's the reasons why. Okay?
Who is the park, the park board?
The senior citizens.
Okay.
The senior citizens basically run the operations.
Oh, yeah.
And that's where the money comes in, accounted for, da-da-da, keep up with all of those stuff, and day-to-day activities. But here's the, here's the logic behind this. I believe if I understand that one of the pluses of putting it up the road was road visibility. Well, if you come from Gate City, there's no visibility of that at all, because you'll be looking toward Nicholsville, and you'll be coming on the bridge. If you come up from Nicholsville, you got, there's five access areas to the road there, and it's in a curve, a flat curve. And people are not gonna be looking left normally, because you got two coming from the school, one from a road, one from the, the park and the pizza plus. So you're not gonna be looking left normally. I've had people try to tell them where the park was at, and they've been to Nicholsville, and they didn't even realize that park was there, and it's more than one. And I tell them about the bridge, and then they understand of the school, but they had no idea that park sits back in there, because it's, you have to look for it. It's not, it's not something you're gonna see a half a mile or quarter mile away, and that's gonna be a landmark for the rest of your life. But anyway, be that as it may, visibility is, it's marginal, we'll give you that. You could put a sign out there and do the same thing. Probably better, because the sign would be all the way the road. Now, the road, unoverbilled, crosses the memorial at the bridge right there. There's a sign right there. If we think that's gonna attract people, I, I would argue that David Mann has a farm over Fort Blackmore. It's probably one of the most remote areas in this county in terms of looking for traffic to get by, to have business. But he, he sells a good product, and he sells it at the right price point. And you can always pound on it, and people will come from all over to go get it. If we've got that up there, I argue it will make little or no difference where, if that building is out toward the road, or five hundred feet farther out in the back out there. Let me get to some other issues there. There's gonna be a parking issue there if we rent that building. And that building, the big crowds are usually Friday or Saturday, and we, we rented the building ninety-nine times last year. Out of that, probably thirty-five or forty percent, we had pretty much a packed house, which means that parking lot will be full, overflowing down the road, and into that little parking place out there at the memorial. Last Saturday, the park was completely full with the person who rented the building, plus all the baseball stuff that's going on out there. So parking would be an issue. There's no restrooms, except in the building. And we can't have people coming in after people rent the building to use the restroom. Electrical service is not readily available. We'd have to get a drop from Maple Edge and Power. Water service would be difficult to get to, because the water line is on the other side of the road. That's the downside, as I see it, at that area out there. Let's go to the concession stand. We got a free site, we got limited grade work, and certainly won't have to spend fifteen thousand dollars that we could take and put on a building and make it, go to the things and upgrade it. There's water, easily accessible within fifteen or twenty feet of where the building's gonna be. There's electric drop already out there within about two hundred feet. There's restrooms within an arm's throw there of where the building's going. It wouldn't be more than fifty feet away. There's a concession stand there that could be used for schools or whatever, if the farmer's market's successful, to come out and sell some of their wares if they wanted to do some fundraising. There's ample parking. If you look out there, you can see there's probably thirty-five or forty parking places out there. I haven't counted, but there's at least that many. There won't be a conflict with baseball season, but by the time the farmer's market comes in, baseball season will be over. So there's not, there's not a conflict there right now. What some other uses we could use it for, Nicholsville days, could certainly use it for entertainment. It could be used for weddings, receptions, and you'd have restrooms, other concession stands where you could prefer food. It could be used as a picnic area, but it's not used for farmer's market. It could be used for a shelter at ball games if they hadn't rained. It could be used for games or meetings or other entertainment. I submit to you that the senior citizens have an agreement that says we have the right to operate that, operate as we see fit. And we think that putting it out at the concession stand is the right place to play. So we would like a decision of what we want to do.
We'll discuss that after we close this expression.
Okay, that's fine.
Nice, nice to come. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Morning. Good morning. Gary Baker from Boosie Creek in Federal Road, Highway fifty-eight. Bring it back to the road situation. I just wanted to see if there was any feedback on what you all had done since we came last night. I understand maybe y'all have a beat-up presentation today, but our roads are getting so bad, you know, ditches filled up, tiles filled up, trees along the road that even if they do try to bushfall, can't do a thing for the trees, especially Highway fifty-eight, about a mile from Washington County line, and all the Boosie Creeks in bad shape. And I was just wondering if there's any feedback from last night when we shared if y'all contacted the governor, wrote to governor, or whatever, Secretary of Transportation, or... And I know Jeter mentioned EPA. Well, I know Solomon County cleaned out their ditches here about two months ago, and hauled, I know one guy got thirty-three ton loads of dirt out of the ditches, and evidently the EPA in Tennessee don't do like Virginia or something. I don't know what's going on there. But anyway, I think we ought to try to maybe get Miss Kegley to write some letters to Bead, to Transportation, VDOT Transportation. I don't understand why VDOT in Virginia contracts their stuff out, and Tennessee don't. I don't understand that. Why did we, down the road, we had, used to have everything taken care of in Scott County and all throughout Virginia, because VDOT was of their own nature. I mean, they, they don't know what they want to be then, with them old McMarry boys, Rich McMarry and Harvey and them, they kept everything thing down up our way. But anyway, that's why I was here today, see if y'all had any feedback on that.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? If not, we'll, now, since the expression period, we'll discuss. Thank you, Sheriff Bates, for coming and the presentation. Mr. Baker, we'll see what happened a little bit with the public hearing, the deal at Nicholsville, if I want to address that, what Mr. Dickerson had to say about anyone.
Well, I'm, I'm on the ARPA committee, and you know, we, we come about this, I don't know, a year, a year and a half ago, John? Is that when we applied for the grant? You know, and we was able to receive a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars. Was gonna match the grant for twenty-five more thousand, so that'd be fifty thousand dollars, you know, for sure toward that. Us as an ARPA committee, we just felt like that, you know, the place on the other side of the road, across from the senior building, was the best place. That, that, that was our number-one choice. Of course, it is ultimately gonna be up to the board, you know, in, in the end. You know, we, we did go through.
Daddy, can I come up, please?
I'd rather you didn't. I mean, I, I, once we're through, you know, I'll give you a chance, when he gets through.
I just can't hardly hear him back here.
He, he's, I, I mean.
Oh, yeah, if you can't hear, fine.
It's all right. He's.
Oh, yeah, come on, come on, I'm sorry. I thought.
No, I didn't mean to speak. I just wanted to hear.
Okay, that's fine.
I can't, I can't hear what it said.
Okay, yeah, all right.
If I keep my mouth shut.
No, you're fine. You're all right. But go ahead, Sheriff.
You know, we, we as an ARPA committee just, just felt, felt like that across the road from the senior building was the best place. That, that was our number-one place, you know, that, that, that we had decided. Of course, we had talked to Jeff Kegley, you know, we, we, we went through him, and that, that's what we thought was the line of communication, and we're sorry if we was, we, we didn't, we didn't realize that we need to go through the seniors and have, I don't, there's, there's two separate boards, is that right?
That's correct.
You know, you have your senior board, and then you have the other board that Jeff Kegley is in. What, what's that board called, Jeff?
Recreation Association.
Okay, all right, okay. You know, and that, we just, I, I guess we messed up there, and I, I apologize if, if you all felt like you was left out. You all do a great job at the park. There's nothing to go against what you all do. You know, we just, I guess some, some of the stuff we, we took for granted. You know, you know, I'm, I'm new to the board, you know, you know, we didn't realize what the, the contract that you had. You know, we just took it as the park is county-owned, and we just took it as, you know, we could, of course, we wanted to include you, you all, and we did. And me and Jeff and John Kilgore did, did come to your, your meeting. I don't think you were there, though. You might have had some help in some.
And I thought so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I wasn't there, because my wife had COVID.
Right.
But there was two other meetings after that, and we, Kevine and I talked to you about coming to the meeting last night. We talked yesterday, and.
Yeah, we did. And I, and we had a, we had a long conversation yesterday.
Yep, and we had a very brief conversation. And Mark Jeremy, he stood up for what he was doing, and I did, too, and that's good.
Well, one.
But we're not looking for an apology. We, I want, I just want a solution that's the right thing to do for the park. We, we like the ideal of the farmer's market. And if you go through all the reasons and put them down, the pluses and minuses, you can't come up with any other decision, then the best place for that is out at the concession stand. I mean, but if you only look at one thing, it's the road. It's the road.
But anyway, there was, there, there was other locations, too. The grant is not necessarily limited to the park. limited to the park. It, it's, it's a grant for Nicholsville. We, no, hang on. We could have, you know, there's, there's other site locations, too, that, that we, we have talked about. There's a site that, that the town of Nicholsville owns that is beside the fire department. That, that would be zero probably prep, you know, and it is right on the road, you know, and they're, they're, they're willing for that, but there's limitations on how the grants were. You understand on how, you know, where, where that is town-owned. You know, the, the grant was for the county, you know, and there's, they, there'd be some stipulations there. Another site that, that was mentioned is a, a site that the school owns. There used to be a house there, but there would be a lot of grade work again, you know, and be limited on how to get to it. Somebody did mention, too, there's a little bit of space, you know, beside of the Scott County Telephone Company. We had, we were looking at it on, on this exact picture, and we forgot that the cell phone... So there's not really all that much room left since the cell phone cars there. But, you know, we, we, we talked about a lot of sites, you know. We, we just felt that, you know, the park would be the best place.
Well, we're, we're more than willing to cooperate. We have no problem with that. But if you don't want to put it there, we're fine. If you want to take it somewhere else.
Well, here's, here's...
I mean, we talked about alternatives, what we would do based on what the decision is here last night, and we have, and that was one of the alternatives. If you'd rather put it somewhere else, we're happy to help you, but we want to put it to a concession stand. But if you want to go somewhere else...
Right. Well, here's...
We have no problem with that.
Here's what's going on in, in Nicholsville. I actually talked to the mayor yet yesterday, and they, they have plans on having a farmers' market with a building or without. And their, their plans is to put it beside of the fire hall, that, that lot right there beside. I think they may own that whole thing now. But anyway, what, what may be the best route is, of course, I don't, I don't like giving these grants back. I mean, we applied for this grant. This would be, be up to the board. In the future, maybe Nicholsville could apply for a grant and get their own building if there's no way to switch our grant through the county to theirs.
Let me ask John, John Kilgore, is that possible to do that, where it's the county guarding, cause Nicholsville being included during that as a recipient of that?
I'm not sure we can do that. We would have to go back through the Virginia Department of that and ask that question. It is actually to Scott County EDA, the grant. We have to make sure that that's possible. And I don't, I don't have an answer to that.
But, I mean, if the verbiage could be changed, where, you know, either or, you know, county or the town, so, and that might be the best thing to do, it looks like. I don't, you know, the, the thugs at the senior citizens there have done a lot at that park. It would be very expensive to the county if we took over and had done what they're doing. I get that. And their input in this is, of course, is, to me, is very important, too. But, I mean, you know, getting it, getting it resolved. I don't want to lose that grant. It's what, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Twenty-five.
Yeah. That, that was, that plus the money that they presented from the ARPA committee to that project also.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand total. So anyway, maybe not even putting in the park period might be the answer. That way, that would end it. And if Nicholsville, they can be included in that grant as recipient of that grant, that might be the way to go. If we change the verbiage in it, include them rather specifically to the EDA.
We have no issue with that. Nothing whatsoever.
How much land is Mr. Quarter going to give us?
Enough to put the building on, which is, I, I'm going to throw out a rough number, sixty by fifty, something like that. The building is...
Thirty by fifty.
Fifty or something. And it would have about a ten-foot...
Beyond a skirt.
A skirt around it or a little more.
That, that land is so close to the concession stand anyway, with parking and free land.
Yeah.
And as, as far as a sign out front or people watching, seeing it going by, that would be a destination. It wouldn't be a place that people could drive about necessarily to see. I would, I would drive up against any to farmers' market.
So with, with, with that, it looks like Quarters Place. What, how do you two feel about Quarters?
Don't, I mean, I'm, I'm tickled to death that Greg is willing to do that. I mean, that's, that's been, you know, something that I guess has went on for a while, and that's, that's good. The only thing that I always have limitations on is taking things off the tax books. You know, I know that's not much. That wouldn't be much. But of course, you'd have to have, you have to build a fence. You know, that's going to be four to five dollars a, a foot. You know, however long that is, I'm sure there's, there'll be deed searches. There'll be transfers of deed. I don't know all the, all the ins and outs of that. But there'll be some costs, costs there, too. But, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to you all. I mean, I, you know, I don't, I pretty much said from the get-go, we can put it wherever. I mean, I don't really care. But, you know, just, we just felt, felt like the best place was across the road, simply because it's close to the road. That's that. I mean, that's, that, and that's, that's what I told, told Ms., Mr. Vickers yet, yesterday. I mean, I've always heard location, 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 you know, and, but that, I guess that's what I had on my mind.
What is the use by date on that grant? When's that to be used by?
Next year in May.
June thirty.
June thirty of next year.
Twenty-four. Okay. That MOU you talked about, I'd like to look at that. Ms. Kegley said it does exist. I'll see that.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
The MOU, the memorandum of...
Sally's got a copy of it. I've only got a draft.
Okay. And that, and I hate to put something off, but let's look at this maybe in June. I will look at that and see, you know, about the, how much input the senior citizens have on deciding that. So anyway, that's important to look at and see what is in that document. That, after everybody will, will discuss some like themselves.
I mean, that's, that's, that's fine. But if, if you do find that we can put it basically where we want to put it, then that's going to cause controversy. And I don't, I don't think that, that, that's a good thing either.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't like...
To build walls, I just, I, I don't think that's good either. So...
I wish they were on board with, with coming together, even having to, you know, let them make the decision without any controversy on it from us. So, is that our view?
Me, too.
All right.
That's fine.
Okay. But Jeremy, and he, he's been on top of it. We've talked about it. So maybe you felt like, you know, there was just what happened in between the board supervisors and, and, and the senior citizens. He has been involved in this to the max.
Well, I agree with, it, it is a little confusion because the senior citizens basically run the operation. They rent the building. They collect the money. They make sure it's clean. And the NARA looks at the bigger projects and kind of the governments of the park. So they're not in the day-to-day operations like the seniors are. And I, I don't know how it got set up that way. If I had a do-over, I wouldn't do it that way. But that, that's what we had heard, and we're kind of dealing with that from an operational standpoint.
Is everybody okay with that? We'll hand down the road one more minute. Is that all right, Jeremy?
Yeah, man, it's fine.
Okay.
I will do. All right, thank you.
I need to be back here in June, or what?
If you want. What am I going to, Ford needs you? I don't know.
If you need me. If you don't, I'll come.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else we need to speak on the, all right. Next item is item number seven, public hearing on special use permit, application submitted by Edward Amos Robbins III for tax mat number seventy-eight dash A dash ninety-four on Powell Mountain Road. Use the parcel as retail sales. So with that, Mr. Gilbert.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Mr. Robbins came in to see me back and went into his initial goal, he's going to do, sell guns out of the old Will Smith store. Since this time, he's changed, and he just wants to take it for retail sales.
I, I meant to say something. She reminded me. That letter that, that was mentioned about sending to BDOT, it was sent. So I wanted to mention, I'm sorry about that. It's my fault. So that way that Gary Baker, another, we, we did send, it was sent. So he didn't hear you.
He didn't hear you.
That letter, that letter was sent, that you mentioned?
Yeah.
It was sent.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sorry about that. I meant to make that, just, anyway, go ahead. Didn't mean to interrupt you, you're on a roll.
That's all right, sir. Anyway, Mr. Robbins came in. He has sensed that the guy changed his mind. He don't want gun sales, but he wanted to go ahead and continue to retail sales in the old Will Smith store. And it's in your package there. It's located off of, at the intersection there of Dry Creek, Purchase Ridge, Clinch, the, the road going up the mountain. It gets all these roads named Powell Mountain Road and Patensville Road. It's right on the intersection there. It's been there for as long as I can remember. You got into your package. He's wanting to go retail sales, and it's an agricultural residential district. Agricultural residential retail sales has to go through a special use permit. Get caught up here. There it is, the location. There's a hurriol of it. And it does take a special use permit. So he applied. We went through the process. It's been presented to the planning commission. They recommended that it be approved. The ice page in your package has all of the people that have been notified by a certified letter that he's applying for that. I haven't heard any negative. Any questions?
Anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Gilbert, anyone? All right. With that, we'll look at the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? No one? All right. With that, we entertain a motion to approve the special use permit. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Taylor made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Just briefly second. Any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is a public hearing on the proposed adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact the real estate tax exemption ordinance for elderly disabled persons to reflect changes in section five. The amounts of toll combined income and toll combined financial worth in section ten, the amount of the exemption. So with that, we do have this public hearing. Does anyone wishing to speak during this public hearing on this? The numbers, then, there's quite a few numbers there. It's going to do, it's going to help the elderly and disabled, if that's, if there's income requirements and so on. But with that, anyone? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve?
Someone, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Taylor made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
This, Addington, second. Any discussion? I want to call you, Mr. Prue. I, I bet you used to that.
Hello, it's okay.
All right. Then, have a motion, second, any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carried. That'll help the folks in the county to promote this kind of thing. Next item is a joint public hearing with the Virginia Department of Transportation and Scott County Board of Supervisors on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four through two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-nine in Scott County, and on the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. So the, the BDOT folks want to come, we will get at this. Good morning.
Good morning.
You heard a lot there about things, so more educated than what you were.
I'm Joey Mullins. I'm the Assistant Resident Engineer at the Wise Residency. We have, of course, this time of year, every year, we do the secondary six-year plan update before the board. There are copies of that. We also think we have a few extra copies available if anybody just wanted to look at those. The, so the plans from last year are basically unchanged. Those same projects that were on there are still on there. We added an additional two projects to the plan for the, for this secondary six-year plan update. And those two projects are a one and a half mile segment of Snowflake Road, Route six seventy-one, that it is, and so it would be added onto the plan. It would be fully funded in FY twenty-nine, which would mean it would be in the construction season of fall twenty-twenty-eight to summer twenty-twenty-nine. We also have recommended a one-mile segment of Mineral Hill Lane, Route six sixty-nine. And both of those projects are starting at the, I guess, on, on Snowflake Road, it'll be starting where the pavement ends, coming from seventy-one going up Snowflake Road. Then the Mineral Hill Lane project begins at seventy-one and extends approximately one mile northward for that project. That project shows in the plan to be about ninety-one thousand dollars short, but almost every year, we usually have funds that are swept from completed projects. So we would, would expect that project to also advance that year and be able to go to construction in that fall to twenty-eight to summer twenty-nine period. There, I think there are still some, this would, there, there are still future phases of those two routes and as well as any other routes that the board wants to consider for future plans. But with the funding available and that, that was basically each year, the county gets roughly a million dollars in unpaved road funding that goes towards those projects. With that, we can add generally somewhere between two and a half to three miles of projects, just depending on how much work is involved with those particular But that's what's presented before the board. I'll be glad to ask or answer any questions or address any concerns you may have.
If I have any questions for what we offer the public hearing, anyone have any questions for?
Mineral Hill, I'm just curious. That will take, one mile will take it down across Copper Creek, won't it?
He, I think it's, is it Big Moxon Creek or is it Copper Creek?
It, I think it's Copper Creek.
Big Moxon.
Big Moxon.
Yeah.
It will take it.
It will take it across that.
That's, that's the worst part on that road, so that one mile will really help it get on here.
Yeah. And that, I'll also, just for your information, they, we have been working with Bridge about a, a bridge replacement project for that bridge as well.
Great. The, the Snowflake Road, that's, that's high, though. It one, one point five mile.
That's correct.
You said the, the future to get the other one point five, would that follow the year after that, or how does that work?
I think there was about one mile still remaining. And that would be, that would be a route that the board could consider adding for the next plan update, yes.
Well, that, how far would one and a half miles get? Do you have any idea?
Um...
There, there's Copper Creek. Does it, does it get?
I believe it takes it north of the intersecting road at six seven.
That goes toward Midway?
Yeah. All right.
Is, is there any way to split it up? If, if, you see, there's, there's no houses coming down from where the pavement ends, all the way down to Copper Creek, and then that's the last house. And there, I mean, yeah, at, at Copper Creek. And then there's no houses until you get to Addington Farm. Would there be any way to maybe pave it to the bridge at Copper Creek and then go to the other end and pave that end from Addington Farm to include all the houses and get them off of that dirt road?
Well, generally, if we do a project, we would do one end or the other. We wouldn't like to split it.
I know it brought a lot of movement. I mean, I, I understand that.
Yeah. And trying to, you know, there's a lot of needs. We're trying to...
Right.
...address all the different requests. So that, that was our recommendation, was we would advance forward to phase one on both of those routes. Then for the next year, we could do a phase two project, which another project will, that would be enough to complete the unpaved section on Snowflake Road there, too. would be enough to complete the unpaid section on Snowflake Road there too.
I mean, if we could get it on there, that, that, that whole road needs to be paved. I mean, if we could do high foot it one year, high foot it the next, and have that in writing, that's.
Yeah, and that's what's presented right now. This is, this is the phase one, which gets a mile and a half. That leaves another mile for the board to consider for a future year.
Okay. Because on, on the other end is the part where there's a lady, there's only like maybe two or three, four houses, I can't remember, on, on the other end of it. But there's one driveway there they can't even use. And you know, I know, but still, it's going to be five, six years down the road, so anyway.
Yeah, if there's anything in the meantime, that's something we can work.
It's been looked at as far as I know, but as far as I know, nothing's ever been done. But it's, it's on the other end. I don't remember. It's on the Addington-Furin end. It's a blit, so that lives there. But that's, that's a start. That's good. But we just need, there still needs to be more funding, you know, and it needs to be constant. You know, that's, the six-year plan would work if the funding was there. That's the problem. You know, I mean, there's, there's not, when the funding's cut out, then they can't do either. That's, that's, that's the problem. That, that has to change, Richard.
Any other questions to consider?
Just a real quick question. Joey, I don't know if this is on your table or not.
Sure.
I've asked this several times. This is regarding the Blue Bell Drive on East Carter Valley.
I had provided an email, I believe, to Ms. Sarnes around February that had kind of outlined what was required for that road to be added.
I'll get that to you.
Okay. And, and that go, basically, it kind of outlines to do it as a rule addition, what would be required. And basically, part of that just hinges on whether or not there's enough right of way initially to, to show if it's available or would be able to be meet that criteria. But then it also details, I, I went through and did kind of a rough, I guess, scope of the work that would be required to bring it up to standard to be brought to the system.
And can you give us an idea on what that is?
I don't have that written before me today, but I did, I did put that in fairly detail in that email, so I can forward that to you or.
I can forward it to you.
Yeah, I mean, that's, frankly, there's a lot of roads that are paved that are much narrower than that. It's a good passing. I'm sure you've been on the road. It sounds a lot.
Yeah, there's, there's, I, I, I think it's a great project. I think it's just needing to be able to go through the process to be able to get it added. So I appreciate that.
Okay. Joey, let me ask you one question. I talked to you this past winter about the intersection down here at the red line. And that's one of the most dangerous position places around here. I've seen people go out and turn from the inside lane to the outside lane, going toward Kingsport. They come from Big Stone, they come in the lane that goes out, every combination. And you said that possibly this spring or summer, you could put lines?
You're talking about the dual, the dual turn lanes?
Yes.
You come, yeah. We, we commonly refer to those as puppy prints. They're basically tracks to keep people in line.
That's what we need.
Yeah, and we, we have reached out to Bristol District Traffic Operations about trying to get those marked. I've, I've even mentioned it, it would be great if we could look at some sort of inset marking or something that maybe wouldn't wear as quickly for some of those because it, that, that's the problem with them. They'll mark them. If it's paint, it'll last for a year or two, and then they get worn off. So we would need to try to do either thermoplastic or maybe some sort of inlaid marker.
That'd be great. That's a very dangerous place. The other thing I want to mention, the last time you were here, you didn't come up to speak, and the gentleman that's new didn't know about the bridge on Big Branch going up Clinch River. We were told about three years ago and saw maps of a bridge that was going to be placed there. Do you have any information on that?
That, it's not ringing a bell with me right off. I can research it.
That's 65 up through there.
Oh.
It was metal route, great bridge.
I got, okay, that one.
They were talking about even detouring the road up around Big Branch and back down to 65 at that time.
Yes. That, that's the route, yeah, the Route 65 bridge replacement project. I will, I can get you some, or are you wanting to know about schedule or?
I'm just curious about when, when it'll happen. My bus is up through there all the time, and if, if that bridge is unsafe, something needs to be done there.
I will, whenever I get back to the office, I'll look up that project, and I can get you details on when the schedule will be over.
Joey, Mr. Baker asked about cleaning ditch lines and stuff. Do y'all have any plans to clean ditches?
Yes, the maintenance, and that's, yeah, the, that's part of our ongoing maintenance operations. We do have metrics and, and things like that that they have to meet. That's going to be more in Wade Belcher. He's our Assistant Residency Administrator who's over our maintenance operations. But I, I do know that they are, they work really hard about trying to plan different work. We're trying to get all the different needs addressed. And I know ditching and cutting back brush and things are definitely two of those high priority items for Scott County.
And Wade has assured me that will happen.
Yep.
On a different note, I got a call from M.A. Lunsford. Bill, I don't know if you can bring up the, this place, it'll be down on, down a little where Dr. Redwine's business is at. It'll be that road that turns to the left on Wado. No, on Wado Gap. I forget the name of the road. It was a little piece in there on one of those roads. When you come down from Dr. Redwine's, go around, go down the hill, go around a curve, first road to the left, right there. Right here? That's the first road to the left. No. The next one. The fucking next one.
To the subdivision?
Yes. Yes, yeah, where M.A. Lunsford used to live. And I know I'm putting you on the spot on this one. That's okay. We can communicate, you know, afterward. But there was a section that was closed off, and there was actually, I think, a piece of rail or something to block it. I don't know, 100 feet or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you go around through there.
It's just before the bridge where he's talking about.
You're going correctly.
Further on down on Wado Gap. That's where you're talking about.
Where M.A. Lunsford lived.
Just before the bridge?
Yeah, there's a subdivision to the left before you cross the bridge.
Right here?
No, that's a river road.
Okay.
There.
Right there.
What's the name of that road?
Black Horse Road.
I think it's Block House.
Block House.
I believe that.
You're calling it.
Trying to read in Google's search.
What was his name?
So when you go up that hill, and I need to go down there and look at it, you know, to, to see what he's specifically talking about. The VDOT had closed off a little road, I'm not sure, and then put a berm up there. And he's wanting it opened up, you know, he, he's an assistant living home in Alabama, but he was not prepared to be opened up before there could be parking.
Oh, right, right there. Right, right left to the hand. I see it be the guardrail or something across, looks like an old road.
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, right there.
So, oh, okay. So it was probably, probably used to cross the, the old road route. Used to go, and then probably blocked that off to.
Yeah, he wanted that opened up.
Okay. Okay.
We can look. And I can provide, you know, computer pills and things like that.
Okay. I, I would, I imagine the intent was to try to prevent somebody from driving through inadvertently and going off the edge of the.
Joey, I have a quick question for you. How already, the red light food city in 158, '23, you haven't changed there? If you get those in some kind of sequence, is that, how long is it to do that?
I, I think they've actually looked at sequencing that as part of these project pipeline efforts and stuff.
Getting traffic flowing.
Yeah, we just had those synced like, late, late last year because traffic was backing up Plum to the Funeral Home in the evenings. So they've worked on the sync, and where traffic's flowing now in the afternoon, it really helped that.
Good, good. Yeah, they, there was, that was an issue. You, you really, as close as those are spaced together, it's good to have them synced up so that you get a platoon of vehicles going through at once, so. But yeah, they, they, I know, I think they had worked on those based on any feedback.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Just a real quick, I think you can pass on to Wade.
Okay.
Had run across a situation where, for some reason, the speed limit signs have been taken down on Filter Plant, Filter Plant Road. And so he's since, just within a matter of three or four days, got that taken care of, so thank you back to him.
And got those put back in.
Before we open the public hearing, anyone else have any questions or comments, Mr. Mullins?
One, one quick thing. Myself and Mr. Belcher and Mr. Hartless went around the other day. They were needing a right of entry or something like that for a, a Mr. Baker's on Highway 71. The new supervisor at Fort Blackmore emailed me and needed to know where he lived or what his name was or anything, but they said something about getting the paper to me and taking it to him and letting him sign it, and me getting it back to you all, because he don't get home till like six o'clock. And just, they just need that paper for him to sign, and I'm willing to take it to him or you all leave it in his mailbox.
As far, yeah, I was going to say, as far as that goes, we can mail it to him. If that needs to be, we just, if we got an address, we can mail it to him.
Okay. I, I didn't know his address. I just, I, I can get it, but just whichever, that, that, that needs to, if I can help in any way.
Okay. Yeah, if, I would suggest just getting that. If you've got his address and can write it to Wade, we can send it forward directly too.
I'll get it on the way home.
Okay.
That, that way you'll have that.
All right.
That's sort of all.
Anyone else before we open the public hearing? All right. Good luck. I appreciate what you're doing, and thank you for coming.
Okay.
I'll sit back down and I'll wait around till you all need anything else.
Anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing? Anyone? Close the public hearing. We will entertain a, a motion and a second to approve this six-year plan. Some roads added. Miss Peggy, it'll be a little while, but Snowflake will be added, so.
Well, I hope I'll live to see it.
I'll be too. It's just not a road, at least it's, it's, it's going to get funded, and it's going to happen, but it just.
Well, one other thing, don't ever give back grant money, put it on secondary roads.
We would, I promise. All right, we need a motion to approve the six-year plan as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Prue made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Harretson, second. Any discussion? All three of them say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carried. Thank you, everybody. Good, good, good information. Next item is out of town, it's Lana Mullins from the Department of Social Services. Give us an update, if you would, please. How are you today? You know how VDOT works now? Do you guys figure it out?
I do, I do. I live right close to that last project they called that.
Okay, good.
So, good morning. As Chairman Man said, my name is Lana Mullins. I'm the Director of Scott County Department of Social Services. And I'm just here to give you an update on fiscal year 2022 as it's closing out. We're starting a new one. A little bit about what our agency does for the community. We have two divisions within the Department of Social Services. We have our public assistance side, and then we have our services side. So as far as public assistance benefit programs, we have the SNAP program, which many refer to as our food stamps, the supplemental nutrition assistance program. We have TANF in view. TANF is temporary assistance to needy families. We have medical assistance, which consists of long-term care, ABD, which is aged, blind, and disabled, and then our Medicaid program. We also have energy assistance, which provides heating and cooling assistance, and then we have a fraud management program. So just to go over a few statistics with you, based on the Virginia Department of Social Services Office of Research and Planning, we have 20% of our county's population living in poverty and 24% of our children living in poverty. This is compared to a statewide poverty rate of 10%. So ours is much higher than the overall state rate. If you look at that over the last 10 years, our poverty rates were the highest in 2014 with 20.8%, and the lowest being in 2019, which went down to 14.8%. If you look at the state poverty rates over that same time period, they have only fluctuated 2%. So it's interesting to me that our lowest poverty rate was right before we went into the COVID public health emergency. And since that time, it has steadily increased and is almost back up to our highest rate, which was dates back to 2014. During FY '22, Scott County had 8,451 residents who received some form of public assistance, that being SNAP, TANF, or Medicaid, or it could have been a combination of the three. This number has increased by roughly 1,400 over the past five years and increased by 562 just in the last year alone. The largest increase is in the medical assistance category, and that can be contributed to Medicaid expansion, which occurred in 2019, and also the public health emergency. 7,935 residents received medical assistance. Many of these are combined with TANF and SNAP as well. The number of people under age 65 who are uninsured in a locality is 1,325, which is only 8% of our population, does not have insurance. The number of insured is 91.4%. And of course, this is looking at a population under age 65, under Medicare age. Looking over the last 10 years, in 2012, 23% of our population was uninsured. So that has dramatically changed over the last few years. Our TANF program is funded through a federal block grant from state funds authorized by the General Assembly, and TANF is based on the Title IV Act of Social Security. Our TANF is temporary assistance to needy families, which is actually a check that is issued to needy families, and it also has a work or education requirement with it unless there's an exemption with the family. We have 292 households receiving TANF, and that has dropped from 393 over the last couple of years. Our food stamp program, to give you a little bit of food stamp trivia, food stamps actually began, began with four localities in far southwest Virginia, and that was Lee County, Wise County, City of Norton, and Dickinson County. So I didn't know that until I was reading some information yesterday, so I thought that was interesting. And through this program, it spread throughout the Virginia and then through the nation until 1974, when it become nationwide. So our SNAP benefits is 4,673 households. And that number may seem low compared to Medicaid, but that's household number, not individual number, so it's about the same. In addition to these programs, the agency served 1,977 households through our energy assistance, which provided either cooling or heat assistance in the winter. We have a full-time fraud investigator that investigates allegations of public assistance fraud. In the last year, we received 60 reports of public assistance fraud, and during that year. And during that year, we were also under a public health emergency. So we were unable to turn off any Medicaid assistance. So our fraud numbers were much lower because honestly, there was not a lot we could do because of the public health emergency, even though there could have been some fraud going on. But despite that, we still had $22,248 that resulted in disqualification of services, which is basically, once we identify fraud, an individual can be disqualified from receiving public assistance again. And this year.
Was that for life? Was they disqualified? Is that forever?
Yes.
I thought it was.
And this year, we're up to 33,000 and the year's not over. So it's, as the public health emergency is ending, we're able to do much more with our fraud program. So I move on to the Service side, which is our Child Welfare and Adult Protective Services. And Child Protective Services, of course, we are responsible for investigating abuse and neglect of children within the county. We had 726 referrals last year of child abuse and neglect. 638 of those referrals met validation for us to investigate. 428 of those were what we call a family assessment and 210 were investigations. Our investigation track is for more serious cases, such as sexual abuse, severe physical abuse, and reports resulting in a child coming into foster care. Physical neglect is the most prevalent category with 491 of the referrals being for physical neglect, followed by physical abuse at 76, sexual abuse at 29, emotional abuse at 24, medical neglect at 13, and seven substance-exposed infants. Substance abuse is associated with an estimated 80% of all referrals that we receive. Within our Child Protective Service program, we are monitored by the state and the federal government in several safety outcome areas. So just to go over the performance in those, we have no occurrence of maltreatment, which we have a state standard of 95. Our county met that at 99%. We have no abuse while in foster care, a state standard of 99, and we were at 100%. Our in-home services where we work with families, contacts made monthly at 90% and we were at 97%. And timeliness of contacts with our child victims, standard of 87% and we were at 100%. So our Child Protective Service program works really hard to meet those safety standards. Moving on to foster care, of course, we have children in foster care that come to us through court commitment and through abuse and neglect and sadly also through petitions to be relieved of custody, where parents file that with the court when they are no longer able to care for their children. We had 41 children in foster care last year. Each one of those children have an established goal in which we work with the court. That's either return home, adoption, or relative placement, independent living, or permanent foster care. We have 12 months in which we work with those families to achieve those goals. And after those 12 months, we have federal requirements and court requirements that push us to make a different goal if it's not been achieved. Of the 41 children in foster care, the average time in care has been 12 months. The majority of our children are in family-based placements, either in a local foster home or a treatment foster home. And last year, we did have three children in comatose or residential care. We're required to visit all our children at least monthly. We try really hard to keep our children in the community, but we do have children placed across the state, including central and northern Virginia. We've had three children this past year who have been placed in adoptive homes and their adoption's finalized. Adult Protective Services is our program in which we work with the elderly, much like with the Child Protective Service. The only difference is with Adult Protective Services, adults do have the right to make their own decisions. So if they're living in unhealthy situations or situations that are not in their best interest, as long as they are competent, they are, they do have the right to make those decisions. So we cannot intervene if they choose for us not to. And last year, we had 199 reports of adult abuse, neglect, or exploitation. Moving on to funding, the Department of Social Services is funded through federal, state, and local dollars. The total social services spending by funding source for Scott County was comprised of 57.6% federal funds, 41.3% state, and 1% local. Now that is across all program areas. So that's all of our assistance in all program areas. The actual administration, there's a higher local match for that. Social services spending by category is 96% benefits and 3.6% administration. In regards to the administration, the locality has a 15.5% match rate. During FY '22, the total amount funded to social services by local funds was $790,427. DSS generates revenue back into the locality through staff salaries and client benefit spending and the total amount of revenue through DSS expenditures back to the locality was $75 million and $66,000. And these figures are compiled by the Department of Social Services Office of Research and Planning. Just to tell you just a few challenges that we face that I think the board should be aware of. We are experiencing a historic workforce shortage in our child welfare programs, especially in Child Protective Services and Foster Care. We have an extremely difficult time retaining staff. Much of that is due to the high workloads, the danger that these folks are exposed to, the low pay, and just the trauma that they are exposed to every day by the work that they do. We've had about a 50% turnover rate in the last year and we have several vacancies right now. Another issue that we are experiencing is what we refer to as high acuity needs of children in foster care. Across the state, we're experiencing a higher level of need of kids coming into care. Much of this is mental health crisis coming out of COVID-19 pandemic, increasing substance abuse issues and behavioral issues. Last year, there were several hundred children that actually spent the night in offices because there was no placement that could be located based on the children's needs. We've actually had that happen here in Scott County. Even in the last two months, our staff has spent overnight in the office because we did not have a placement for the children. That's a huge liability issue. Government building should not be a place where we house children. But when we have children placed with us and there isn't placement, that's the situation we find ourselves in. The final challenge that I'll just mention, something that touches all programs is continued substance abuse. We have began doing hair follicle testing on all children that enter foster care and we are finding at an alarming rate, kids entering care have been exposed to drugs even as young as 10 months. We are seeing high levels of meth in those children through hair follicle testing. So it's a very challenging time to do this work. Although we face these challenges though, we strive each day to work together to make our community a safer place to live. And I'd like to thank Ms. Starnes and all her staff for all they do to support us and the board for your continued support. Any questions?
Could you, I think you did a very thorough report and a lot of things on your plate there and a lot of concerns. Could you provide a digital report of that?
I can. Be happy to do that.
That's a lot to absorb. I would like to have a copy of it too. I started keeping some notes, I couldn't do much, but I would.
I'd be happy. I could send that to Freedom.
I'd just like to say, one of the most rewarding things I've done since being on this board is serving on Lana's Board of Directors and I'm currently the chairman of that board. And she does a great job and her staff does a great job. It is hard to retain people right now.
Yes, it is.
But I keep setting up about them. They're great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we think our job can get hard sometimes. It would be tough. It would be tough working there. Can you imagine kids having to sleep in the office because you have no place to put them? And having to send kids up to state, you don't have a foster home. 41, I think you said, is in foster care right now. And so anyway, I don't know. It's just, you hear these numbers and it's really, it's almost unbelievable that we have the situations we have. One thing you said, I'm going to ask you, on the TANF stuff, you said there is work and educational requirements for that, for those families. But there is exceptions for, what are some exceptions for that?
So the exceptions with that is if you have a child under 12 months and you're the caretaker for that child. If you have a medical disability or you're incapacitated. If you have a family member that you're providing full-time care for, or if you're under the age of 18. That's about the only exemptions.
And I really believe, I mean, work requirement and educational requirements isn't a mess.
Yes.
Because, I mean, you know, they have those signs up in the forest, don't feed the bears because they get used to it and they don't want to search on their own. I get it, but you folks doing that, I admire what you do. I mean, I can't say enough about, I don't want to, you know, go on and on here about that, but I'm just, with those numbers, I'm just a bit overwhelmed to hear myself having to do it, what y'all are having to do.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you so much. All righty. Next item is item 11. Revita update, Ms. Starnes. I'll take a time out now.